All right. Welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, September 18th, 2017. First agenda item is signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the warrant.
I would second that.
I'll also vote in the affirmative, and that's unanimous. Next agenda item is approval of the minutes, and this is for a regular session on September 6th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve that.
And I would second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Also vote in the affirmative and make that unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification.
Sure.
The September 6th exec, did you, do we include that? I'm sorry.
Um, I, we don't have it separate. Is it on the back here?
Yes.
Yep, there it is.
I'd like to pull that out separately, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you indulge me. So, um, so I think I can do this in open session because it doesn't necessarily reveal the content. But, um, number, item, item number four of exec, discussion, sue the legal due diligence document production list provided by Brown and Rutter included list of indemnifications. I just wanted to omit that sentence, or at least omit including the list of indemnifications. And the reason why is that, that discussion listed warranties, which you said would translate into indemnification, but I'm still requesting a separate list, and I think that's why there was confusion, why I don't have it now. A separate list of indemnifications and what they intend to hold us harmless from, or how they intend to protect, you know, what's its target. And all I'm looking for is a brief Excel spreadsheet.
No, you made that perfectly clear, so hopefully.
So, Rick, does that make sense in this, in that first sentence at, after Brown and Rudnick? And just omit including a list of indemnifications?
Oh, okay. So just put a...
Period after Rudnick.
Okay, sure.
That work for you?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And, and what's important out of this is through the discussions that the, that happened with staff, that they understand we're still looking for that. Thank you.
And with that, is that a, was that a motion, or do we want to keep?
That was a motion that I make that adjustment.
Okay. Mike, is there a second?
I would second, and I have no problem with that.
All right. Also vote in the affirmative, and that's unanimous. And then we have minutes for a regular session on September 11th, 2017. Also vote affirmative, and that's unanimous. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Not seeing anyone. We move on to public hearings and scheduled appointments. First is Richard's Roadhouse for, regarding a request for an automatic amusement license.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Okay. The Milford Board of Selectmen will act on Mr. Winch, uh, Winchman, yes?
Winchman, yeah.
Winchman. Uh, your application for the reference license of an automatic amusement. We asked you to be here. Any outstanding local real estate, personal taxes owned by the applicant. Go through the license application form. This is for, what it comes down to is two pinball machines. And you have the chief of police's signature on it. I don't know, Paul, if you want to say anything, or if there's anything more to it than that. Not to oversimplify it, but this seems like a pretty simple request.
Yes, doesn't it?
You've been at business a long time.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. I'd like, I'd like to take this moment to apologize for missing the previous meeting. I have a fairly decent alibi. I was on the tarmac in Fort Lauderdale for four hours. So I had every intentions of being here, and I apologize for, for having you postpone me.
Not a problem. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. Not, not much activity recently. Is there anything changing, any exterior, interior?
We are, we are, our, our schedule was supposed to be October 1st. As far as relaunching with the, with the new name and the signage. Everything seems to take longer than it should. I'm hoping by November 1. I'm actually interviewing right now to try to round out the staff. So we're optimistic that we'll, we'll be in full throttle soon. And we're at the point now where sooner is better than later.
I fully appreciate it. You know, whether it's a business or homeowners trying to do renovation and change some things, it takes some time. I, I was just curious what the schedule was, and if there were any changes. I appreciate you doing that.
We're officially behind.
Yeah. That will happen. Hope you get caught up, and I hope everything works out in your favor and for the benefit of the business. Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve this.
I would second that.
I'll also vote in affirmative, and that's unanimous. Have a good night, Paul.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, Paul.
Next is, we invited Michael Isabella, the, the new administrator for the, for Countryside and the Geriatric Authority. And we also have Dave Consigli, the chairman of the Milford Geriatric Authority. Oh, I forgot.
You forgot.
It's okay. I promised Mike we wouldn't keep him here. Dave, I think everybody knows you, but if you want to introduce yourself, and I'll just say that I've heard a lot of good things and a lot of, a lot of good things happening up to the Geriatric Authority, and a lot about Mike. And this year, we've been inviting other committees in, ones that are independent like yourself, that, you know, we can just see if there's anything that we can help with. Lead, follow, stay out of the way, whatever it is. But I just wanted to see if we could get him a little FaceTime, and you could tell us about, introduce Mike, and tell us how things are going.
Well, first of all, for the record, my name's David Consigli, chairman of the Countryside Healthcare. And we spent an awful lot of time interviewing, with the interviewing process, when Barry Childer retired. It was a little bit more encompassing, I think, than everybody realized. I wanted to do a year in advance lead time. We kind of shot that down about six or eight months. In any event, the process was lengthy. It was detailed. And I think we, this, this community is, I'm very proud, and I think this community should be very proud to have Mr. Mike Isabella as the new administrator for Countryside Healthcare. He's already changing certain, being proactive with creative aspects of the facility. And I think the Board of Trustees is very happy with the decision that was made, and therefore, I'd like to introduce Mike to, to you people, of course, and to the community.
Thank you very much for those compliments. My name is Michael Isabella. I am the new administrator at Countryside. I have approximately 33 years of experience in the business. You have one of the best in nursing facilities that I've seen in my career here in Milford. I used to formerly run another facility here in Milford, and Countryside was always a number one competitor, and I always wished to get to their level of excellence. So now I can say I'm there. It's a beautiful facility, a lot of good and dedicated staff who have been there many years, many of the employees from the community, and speak very highly of, you know, the community, and know a lot of the residents who were there. So it's almost like extended family, so that's a very big plus. Building enjoys a four-star CMS rating, which is also very good. We have a higher staffing ratio there than I've ever seen in my career. So that's another thing that helps to make Countryside number one in the community.
Oh, that's great. Mike, you and I had a chance to, to talk prior to the meeting, so I feel like I've gotten to know you a little bit, and I appreciate that time. Just want to see if the board members obviously want to, want to engage with you. Bill?
Michael, I just want to welcome you. I appreciate your experience and in this healthcare industry. I know it's, can be trying with all the rules, regulations, and different things that happen. Look forward to your leadership. And, you know, I think there was a period of time where we may be, I would say, we may have been losing our way. And so I look forward to you putting a greater focus on patients, their wellness, the staff, and, you know, patient satisfaction. I think, you know, it'd be helpful if, I'm not sure what industry benchmarks there are for patient satisfaction and family satisfaction. I know you're not always going to satisfy everyone, but it's very important to us. And, you know, there may be things you hear, and David hears, that we may not hear, but there's certainly some times where we hear some things that we may want to reach out to you or the board, and through David, make contact. So I appreciate it, and I welcome you, and look forward to us getting back on the road to recovery.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave and Mike, I'm going to talk, as I said to you, Mike, outside in the corridor earlier, I'm going to talk from a personal note. I think your facility is flawless. My wife spent many, many weeks there, ended her life there. The care, second to none, second to none. Every base covered. And I mean, everybody, not just, you know, not just the doctors, not just the nurses. I'm talking about people when you come in the front door. I'm talking about the receptionists at the desk when you're leaving at night. Just over the top. And as I said to you, I think what really said it to me was, again, on a personal note, Tuesday at Milford Hospital, when they, you know, they said to me, you know, what do you want to do? And she looked, and she said, I want to go back to Countryside. She knew she couldn't come home, but she was so comfortable there, and she felt so cared for there, that she wanted to go back to Countryside Healthcare. That says it all for me, says it all for me. And, and I felt the same way when I walked around and I talked to people. I got the same feeling. So, you know what? As, as Selectman Buckley said, you know, keep making improvements. We can always, always make improvements. But from a personal note, I have to say thank you. I think you do a great job, and something that we should be very, very proud of in the town of Milford, and that we are very, very proud of. Thank you. Thank you.
I do want to make a comment, because, you know, Mike got, Mike got shoved into the, into the position when the challenging of the healthcare reimbursement rates started beating us up for the last three, four, five years. And it became difficult to be able to keep the staffing, the, the quality of the care that we, we tried to always want to have. And it's, it's been, it's always been a challenge. I mean, you'll hear that from all the hospitals, from every nursing facility around. That's why you've seen so many, so many facilities being purchased and bought out. It's because it's, became all about the numbers, and not about the healthcare of the patients and the families. So that focus is always drive, the driving force, and more importantly, making sure that our staff are treated respectfully, with dignity, and the families deserve nothing short of that with the care and compassion that we try to provide. And Mike is just trying to take this to another whole new level. And I'm, I'm thankful for having him on board as well.
Well, again, for a guy that spent many, many days there, you'd never know that from the outside.
Well, Michael, you know, no one can, can, I don't think, we are so devastated about the loss that you had to go through. And it's, I think this whole community realizes that, and it's a very difficult situation to go through. We hoped and prayed that the services that you did get were the compassionate aspects of what we try to do every day.
Oh, my God.
Will we have a hiccup once in a while? Absolutely. Nobody's perfect. But we try to make that hiccup not happen at all. And I think that when, when Mike came on board, takes a little while to get the adjustments through with the system. He's been in now for a few months, and we can always start to see the positive continued changes to happen every day. And I think the entire board, and hopefully the Board of Selectmen, the town of Milford, will continue to support this great facility, because it really is a wonderful facility.
It truly is.
Thank you.
Well, David, that's where the second part of the conversation wanted to go to. Is there anything you need from us, want from us, some things coming down the road that, that we might be somewhat of assistance to you?
Sure, the money, we could, we could always use money.
Like you said, we have to, we should be supporting this and doing what's needed, so...
I think, I think the facility over the last 10 or 15 years, at least since I've been there, and I know Rick has been there even much longer than I have, we became proactive with keeping updated with the facility it's building. And we've done a great job at that, especially since we just finished up on the memory care side of the expansion of the unit. Now it's just a matter of keeping the perfection even better. And we're going to continue to strive for that. There'll be bumps in the road with the way the Medicaid reimbursements and Medicare reimbursements come through. We don't know if we'll need additional support coming down the road, but I'm, I'm happy to discuss that, if that does come up with, with you people. And right now, I think we're okay.
Okay.
We just keep on fighting every day, and we just want to make sure we can provide the best care we possibly can.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Mike, welcome, and thank you very much for coming tonight. Hopefully, we get you home at a reasonable time. Thanks, David.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chief, would you mind joining us for a sec? You, you were number one on my list.
No, it's fine. Kind of like hurts, you know?
Yeah.
Right there.
No, I had, I had asked, just for the people watching, I had asked for the chief to come in, not to obviously speak at any detail on any ongoing investigations, but, you know, I, I was kind of disheartened by what happened at the Nero's house with this whole, you know, I guess vandalism, because I was actually just saying to a couple of folks over the weekend that, you know, regardless of whatever side you're on, everything's been, you know, the dialogue's been, been good, the debate's been good, and it's just something like that just kind of hurts the whole argument. And I know that's not really, you know, something for you to enforce, obviously, but I just, you know, I just wanted to get the message out that, you know, that it's just, like, it's just too bad.
Unacceptable.
And, you know, I, I know, you know, obviously, Tom, I'll let you talk. It was just, it was disheartening, and right up until a couple of days before, this, this whole emotional debate has been actually very respectful.
I think everything you just said is pinpoint. I mean, it's wrong. There's no other word for it. And we do have an obligation. Our obligation is to protect people's constitutional right, you know, to express their opinion one side or the other. And for someone to try to stifle that, and frankly, for, in a horrendous way, I mean, what a violation, you know? You go onto someone's property and literally destroy their automobile.
That's what it sounded like.
Oh, most certainly. That, that, that vehicle is going to have to be fully repainted. There's, there's no buffing anything out, there's no fixing. It's repaint the whole vehicle. And Mike, you're in the business, to repaint the vehicle today from bumpa to bumpa could be half the value of the vehicle. Now you're into a thing with your insurance company, or do they total it because of paint? I, and set that aside, I mean, the violation of coming onto their property, just to, to express your opinion in such a vile way, wrong. There's no, absolutely no excuse. From our end of it, you know, Officer Joe Franciscone responded initially. He did all the right things from a policing perspective that needed to be done. I was down on Fountain Street Saturday. I was down in that neighborhood yesterday to see what might be helpful to us. We assigned four police officers, so you have Sergeant Detective Ken Kikade, Detective Tony Canaro, Carlos Souza, as you know, is an acting sergeant. We assigned Carlos because he, he is working days, so we were able to pull him and put him into the middle of the investigation. And then one of his counterparts that works for him, Paul Pinto, who's a very skilled police officer as well. So the four of those officers and supervisors spent the day today, and their goal is, they canvassed the neighborhood, their goal is to gather whatever information they can. So if someone saw something out of place, you think you saw a vehicle from 11 o'clock Friday evening until 7 o'clock, 7:45 Saturday morning, anything suspicious at all on Fountain Street, we'd be happy to talk to you, because it, it's going to prove to be helpful to us. So they're working on it diligently. I, I know each of the steps that they're undertaking, and they have the checklist down. These are very experienced investigators, so they know what needs to be done. So I'm, I'm confident that additionally, just the aside, as we would do in any situation, because we don't know who's responsible, and we don't know what age grouping they're in, we always provide information to the school resource offices and school administrators, just in the event that they are younger people. And I'm not saying they are.
Could be.
It could be, may very well not be. So, but just so you know, some of the steps, you know, this is a team effort. We bring in each of the resources that we have to see if we can figure it out. And as you know, these investigators are very skilled. They figure out a lot of things, so...
No, and I appreciate you coming in, because again, I certainly don't doubt the, the police work, and I know that you were there. And quite honestly, knowing Donna and Jeff as I do, they were, I mean, very pleased with the service. I'm sure you call it customer service or something, you know, from a police standpoint, but I'll tell you, they were, they were very happy and pleased by, by the, the folks that showed up and the way it's all been handled, because...
That's the goal.
Yep.
You know?
And we get a chance to brag about that?
No, that's the goal. The goal is that we should be providing that kind of service, you know? And I, and they did express that they were pleased with the officers and the response by the department.
And publicly, yeah.
You know, that said, you know, people just, look, you can disagree, you know, you don't have to be disagreeable to the point where you destroy someone's property or bring harm to them. You do that, you, you're going to be in a real bind, you know, because there's just, there's no forgiveness. This is the type of case, you hand the district attorney this case, you're, you're going to be indicted. There's no if, ands, and buts about it.
There should be.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, it, it's really no different than stopping someone from going to vote, because you don't believe they're going to vote the way you want to. It's just wrong. So, and, and I might point the fingers at one side or the other, don't know who did it. So all I'm saying is, be respectful. Everyone's going to have the opportunity to walk into the booth. Be respectful.
No, I appreciate that. Gentlemen, anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of points. And Chief, I appreciate the way in which your department responded. It reflects on the town. You know, you mentioned that it's a violation, right? It's a, more than a legal violation, it's a violation of the family, and I know you respect and appreciate that, because you deal with that every day. It's also, in my view, an attempt to intimidate someone. Very clearly, there was a message. It was personal. And to do it 10 feet from where the kids play, from the front door, from the windows, and where people have family, is unacceptable. I know that this board is unanimous in their views, and I know you are, as well as your department. So I appreciate that. I, I also appreciate the fact that, you know, and benefit for the folks that are watching at home, that you have no intention, nor should you get into the details of the incidents and ongoing investigation. But at no point should anybody in this town feel intimidated to not speak their piece, to not speak on a referendum issue. You know, I, I, I hold a strong belief and hope that it's not somebody necessarily from in-town, and it's, but, you know, it doesn't feel reflective of the community at large. I think the community has spoken out against that, and for that, I'm appreciative, and I feel honored to serve on a board when the community responds in the way it has. But nonetheless, people have attempted to intimidate people prior to a referendum. People are violating their personal space in the area where their kids play and where their family is raised. That's unacceptable, and I appreciate all the hard work that you and your staff are doing to get to the bottom of it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, first, I'd like to personally apologize to the Narrows for, for what happened to, to them at their home. It's unacceptable. It's absolutely unacceptable to be in your home, whatever time it happens, sound asleep, whatever it was, and have somebody cross onto your property like that. Totally, totally unacceptable. But I also want to point out, Chief, that you've done such a great job, and your department has done such a great job of handling it. If I'm not mistaken, the Narrows went on today and gave you a five-star review on your Milford Police Facebook page.
They did. They went on and thanked Officer Joe Franciscone, and they were appreciative, because from the moment they called, it was taken as serious as it is. So, and they were appreciative of just the advice that he was able to give them, and the fact that this was something that was made, known to me immediately. You know? So we could get the ball rolling on our end.
Well, I think what's important is, as you know, we're not allowed to discuss it. You know, you, you communicate with us all day long, but it sends a very clear message to me, and I'm sure to my fellow board members, that, you know, this is one incident, but any incident that happens in this town, that our, our police department, our fire departments, you know, are right on it. They get right involved, and they, they have the citizens of this community, you know, in their heart, in their best interest at all times. And I believe honestly that we will find out who did this. I truly do. I, I, I'm sure time that I've been on the Board of Selectmen, I've seen the Milford Police Department solve some pretty amazing cases, situations, whatever you want to call them. So I, I, I really believe that. But I think what's really, the message you said, Kevin and I had a conversation earlier, it's okay to disagree. It's okay. But to vandalize, to hurt, Selectman Buckley said the word intimidate, unacceptable. Unacceptable this day and age. So I just want to say thank you. Keep up the good work. I personally apologize to the Narrows for what happened, and I want the citizens of this town to know that they're safe. They're safe, and that we care. We truly care. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. I just, I mean, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, you know, there are things that we do from an investigative perspective that clearly I can't put on the table publicly. It'll frustrate our efforts, so...
I bet.
There are four people that are working on this particular issue, and trust me when I say, they're, they're vigilant. They, they have the checklist down, they know where they're going, you know? And as you touched on, Mike, frankly, you know, if you were involved in this, and you went and did something very, very foolish, you know, don't make us work too hard, because as we've said in other cases, we're going to do our best to find you. So that's the promise to the Narrows, and frankly, any other resident in this community. You know, you, you have the right to express your opinion, you have the right to go and vote, you have the right to be safe on your own property in particular, let alone in public places. So they have our assurance that we're working on this.
Thank you.
No doubt. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the town administrator's report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items tonight. I just want to inform you that the Solitude Lake Management conducted an aquapro treatment to control the 15 acres of the water lilies at Louisa Lake on August 31st. There were no variable invasive aquatic plants, no floating plants were found, and the report indicated the overall pond looked very well good, well maintained. We had an incident here Saturday on September 16th. A motor vehicle struck the gas main at the town hall. I want to thank the fire department, the police department, the facilities director, and representatives from Eversource who came on-site, and there was a strong odor of gas, and they started to at least contain that. The gas had to be shut off. Repairs were started this morning. There are additional repairs, unfortunately, that we need to make by Eversource underground, and it most likely, the meter will need to be replaced. There was also some damage to the exterior brick and the interior of the building. Plumbing repairs will also need to be done. Again, I want to thank all who responded Saturday morning. They did a fantastic job in containing the situation, and this was as a result of a motor vehicle, again, striking the gas main. Update on the 49 Diller Street property. Town council informed me he attended a hearing in the Milford District Court regarding the eviction of the former owner of that property. The court did issue an order, and the order granted immediate possession of the premises to the town. The next step is to commence the removal of the individual from the property, and we'd be looking for the board's guidance on that. Two final items. One, State Representative Murray informed me that they had a final hearing on the town's request to grant an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises now owned by DZ Inc. It's the former Truffles Restaurant property. The bill will now be sent to Senator Fatman's office to seek approval through the Senate, and I will certainly be hearing from his office, and we'll follow up with the board. Final item, also Representative Murray indicated to me that he attended a conference which included a PowerPoint presentation sponsored by the 495 Metro West Partnership Water Resources Committee, which focused on a bill filed by Governor Baker that would allow the Commonwealth, rather than the EPA or Environmental Protection Agency, to administer the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. As this board knows and is informed, this would certainly impact the MS4 stormwater permit. I have provided a copy of this to the, to board members. Also, we will be reviewing it with the town engineer and highway survey... with the town engineer and the highway surveyor will also have been provided copies. And that's all I have, Mr. T- uh, Mr. Chairman, tonight.
Any questions or comments, Bill?
Uh, just a couple of comments. Um, Rick, were we able to, um, pursue insurance th- uh, on the accident that hit the gas meter and did a significant amount of damage?
Yes, we will certainly be pursuing insurance. We have a, a police report.
It was insurance on?
We're, we're advised that the owner of the property did have insurance, correct, of the motor vehicle. So, we will, uh, Town Council is already working on that, um, starting today.
And, um, if there's, um, I'll let your department, um, your office work with the fin- uh, finance committee and, um, the finance manager, or director of finance, I should say, um, to further protect that, that meter and, uh, area with bollards or the.
Yeah, we're gonna be reaching out. I'm gonna have the plumbing inspector, Eversource, as we've done in the past, to, to possibly, hopefully, put bollards in more critical positions to maybe prevent that from happening again.
Yeah, people see those frequently. They're the, uh, concrete-filled pipes that are yellow. Uh, I, I don't know that it would've, um, prevented the accident, 'cause it sounds like it was, uh, pretty violent, um, but it, it may have protected the meter and minimized damage to the, certainly not to the vehicle, but to the gas meter and to our infrastructure.
I think it would've, yes.
Okay. So, i- if that needs to be a, uh, October town meeting line item, if, I view it, so, this is the way I view it, Rick. I view it as a matter of safety. And so, it's a demonstrability for a vehicle to hit our gas meter. And I've been told that gas could be smelled, uh, far down Main Street.
I was there. It could, yes.
So, um, so there, we're, if we're in a safety situation where, uh, another accident soon after repair, uh, puts our staff at risk or general public at risk, I would, I would look to go to the thincon for an immediate, uh, this is a safety issue, is clearly, so, you know, if this is eight thousand dollars, and nobody's got eight thousand dollars laying around in their budget, let's go just get it done.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Eversource. We've had this in, in the past where they did put a bollard in, um, on their dime, so to speak.
Okay.
So, we're gonna reach out there first, and then we will follow up, 'cause I think it's something that needs to be done. I think you're correct.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that when we deal with and address safety issues, uh, that we always treat them with the highest priority, uh, and as quick as reasonably possible. And I know it'll take some time.
Yes.
Um, and then you asked for, uh, a board, uh, guidance to proceed with the Dillastreet property. I think we gave that to you the last time, but if you need that reinforced, um, you know, my recommendation is we proceed. We're talking about, you know, ten-year lack of payments a year where the property was owned by us. As a matter of fact, I asked at that time, uh, that we get an inspection status of that building, so that.
We will do that quickly.
We know its physical shape.
Yeah, we will do that quickly, and, and also inside and outside.
So, I know I spoke on that.
Yeah.
And if it needs to be structured in the form of a motion, I tell you to proceed.
Okay.
Uh, with the legal process, uh, and follow up on the judge's order and execute the judge's order.
That would be great.
Uh, that's a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I would second that motion, and I'll also vote the affirmative. That's unanimous.
Anything, was there anything else? I don't think there was anything you needed guidance on, Rick.
No, I'm.
Feedback on?
No, I think I'm good at this point. Thank you.
Mike, anything for Rick?
My comments were the same as Bill's, so I'm good. Questions, I should say, were the same, so.
Um, Rick, the only?
I was hoping that you could give us kinda like an informal update on where we are with the Building Commissioner's Office and, and.
Sure, yeah. Um, basically what's happened, um.
I know the posting's not up yet, but soon, right?
Well, actually, the posting's up, and it closed today. Unfortunately.
Oh, and today, it is today. Okay.
To be very blunt, uh, we have not received any applications. So, uh, we need to progress further. So, we have, um, I have reached out along with, uh, Matt Marquardt, our assistant, uh, to a building commissioner in the town of Berlin. His name is Joe Achu. Um.
What?
Yeah, I, I reviewed his, uh, resume. I have met him in person. Um, he works in Berlin now, but he worked also for the city of Worcester, so I'm guessing there's not too much he hasn't seen. He has, uh, willingly agreed to assist us. Obviously, we will be compensating him for his hours' work. Uh, in fact, he, um, because of the necessity of, uh, getting him in here, he actually gave us some hours today because of stop-and-chop. That needs to keep going, that, that plaza. So, he was in there today. Uh, Matt is working with him, uh, on these, uh, inspections. So, going forward, that's where we are right now. Uh, we may have, I'm gonna see what happens. I haven't received, again, any resumes as of today, uh, if we have to repost, but I'll, I'll consider that, and then I will also advise the board at that time. Right now, we do have the coverage we need, so that no resident, no, um, commercial person will, uh, not get the services they need.
That's great.
So, we do have adequate coverage. Obviously, we should be fine within the budget, at least at present.
Sure.
So, that shouldn't be a problem. So, uh, it is covered, um, and then we'll proceed from there.
All right. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. Thank you, Rick, for, uh, you hit the points, right? Um, we wanna make sure that the office has, office has coverage. We wanna make sure that it's, uh, clear to the staff and residents that if they need to escalate, or if they have a concern, they wanna speak to the boss, that, uh, the assistant is, is in charge of that office.
Correct.
And for occupancy permits specifically, I think, is what we're talking about, uh, where we're utilizing the services of a building commissioner from outside of town.
Correct.
And by all accounts, he's, uh, the right personality, the right, uh, headset mindset.
Again, I've met him on a couple of occasions, reviewed his background. I think so.
And as a matter of fact, I think anecdotal, you had already heard that there was linkage between the, uh, uh, building commissioner, uh, that we're utilizing the services from out of town, and, uh, Jen from the assessor's office. So, if, when they went out to look at occupancy, they know they'd connect.
Joe, we, we had a meeting where we brought him in, and I'm sorry, I should've mentioned that. He also met with, uh, the assessor, so that she knows. So, the next time he goes out, and, and when he needs to, she's, will be invited. Uh, also, if he has questions, he can go to her and vice versa. So, she has also met, uh, him in the initial meeting that I had, uh, with not only Jen, Matt, and myself.
That's great, Rick. Thank you.
So, she's, she's on board also.
And I'm encouraged by one last thing you mentioned, um, that as the building commissioner, uh, that we're making use of from out of town, uh, Mr. Achu is, um, uh, involved. He's also, uh, bringing out the assistant, uh, building inspector, so that.
Yes, yeah.
He can benefit from that training and investment and resources, because frankly, no matter how this works and what process we use down the road, people are gonna get sick. People have to take time off. They, they're entitled to vacations and downtime. And it is that training and succession and developing the staff for future leadership, um, that, uh, you know, I'm encouraged to see begin now, because I've been hopeful that that had been going on for a while. But, um, it's good to see happening now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I just find it interesting that in a position like that, in a town like Milford, we haven't had any applications.
Uh, I've talked to some of my fellow town administrators in the area by email and otherwise, and they say, for whatever reason, it's one of the more difficult town positions because of the license requirements.
Yeah.
Uh, number one. And number two, you've got people who are in the trades that may not just be willing to come into, uh, you know, a municipal position like that, because it will impact the rest of their business. So, it's a, uh, I was warned that it would be a difficult position to, to fill, and that has proven to be the case.
Okay.
Now, just a question, maybe you can answer, but if you can, is our assistant, 'cause Bill makes a valid point, is, uh, the same situation in the school committee when Bob was leaving. We've elevated Kevin McIntyre as his assistant. That's why you create the assistant's position. Um, is, is the assistant working on licensing that maybe?
Yes, and he's very close.
Okay. Good, good. That's good to hear. Good to hear.
Yeah. No, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed, 'cause I actually had to go see Erica today, and, uh, I went in there, and the office was open, and obviously, she was, she was there working, and, you know, so.
And, and just one last point, you know, uh, Matt has offered, and we may take him up on the offer, uh, to, uh, maybe put in some additional hours.
Sure.
Um, if need be. Uh, so he has seemed to be more than willing to do that, and again, right now, the budget would allow.
Okay. Well, it sounds like everyone's help, trying to help.
Again, every, from the assessors to the inspections to my office, they've all, uh, going to pitch in and, and assist. And, and Town Council also, they've also been told if they have those kinds of issues on the zoning side, for example, they should search out Town Council and/or myself, uh, to help that way.
Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we move on to old business, and we have the special town meeting warrant, uh, and articles for September twenty-sixth town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve. Um, I, the only thing is, we're gonna need greater detail on where it, especially Article two and Article five on the sums of money. I think I have an understanding of five after talking with Zach, but I'd like, I, I think we should be talking about two before town meeting.
Okay, do we want to, is there anything that we should be talking to Zach about now, since he's here, or?
No, I'm, I'm pretty clear. Right now, I think we can approve as-is.
Okay.
In my motion.
Okay.
And I, I also had a conversation. I would second that as well.
All right.
It needs to be done.
All right.
I'll make that unanimous. Thank you.
That was both articles, Mr. Chairman, two and five?
That was, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. No, I might've missed it.
No, what I meant is the whole warrant again.
Okay, okay.
Total. That, that's why it was one motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Old business.
Thank you.
And is there any old business, any additional old business? Bill?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure that, uh, you know, the, the board is laser-focused on the evaluation process, and that, uh, we know that having an evaluation process before we get too far into the year is, uh, the desired goal and end state. Um, I just wanted to see if Rick had an update for us.
Yes, I will be finalizing a revised.
Okay.
Evaluation process for the board. Consider, I'd like to, if, if the board is okay with that, is to wrap this up by the next meeting.
Okay.
As far as the process and the goals and tasks.
Sounds great.
Good.
Sounds great.
No, and I think, uh, we, we certainly know here at the table and in the office and in town hall, but I think the whole town knows that we've been dealing with a lot of different things right now. So, uh, you're juggling a lot of balls. So, if we could get that, if we could get that done, that's great.
My goal is to wrap it up. First meeting, which is October second, before this special town meeting, and then I can proceed to try and achieve those goals, number one, and also, um, setting up the goals for the department.
Yeah, and Will raised a great point. So, uh, no point am I trying to say that, uh, we're holding it up. We have a lot of balls to keep in the air. We wanna do that. Um, and it wasn't a, a commentary on, I, I just wanted to make sure that we talk about it each week and, uh, the other things that are important to us, uh, as we move on.
No, and I just obviously wanted to say that, so the people at home know that even the three of us, we're not, we're not slacking on it. It was just, there's a lot going on right now. Mike, any old, old business?
Thank you.
Great. Next agenda item is new business, and first is MAC Package Store. They're looking for a one-hour extension. Um, pre-stated forward liquor-serving establishments who wish to extend serving hours on Sunday mornings from eleven a.m. to ten a.m. must complete this form and return it to this office for consideration for approval. Uh, MAC Package Store has applied for an extension to sell alcoholic beverages on Sundays beginning at ten a.m.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Just a question. Why, Mr. Chairman, why do they want to gain just an hour? I mean, what are they gonna gain in an hour?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to, by way of explanation, which I probably should've provided, um, the ABCC allows such an establishment to sell beginning at ten a.m. A lot of establishments are doing it. They actually have the right to do it as a matter of right. The only obligation they really have is to notify the licensing board, the three of you gentlemen.
Okay.
That they intend to do that. So, that's the.
At one point, it was noon time, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And now they can do eleven, and now ten.
This is the earliest they can do it.
Oh, okay.
And a lot of the stores have been taking advantage of that, if you will, to do that. Again, you really can't stop them, but they do have to notify you that, in case there was something else.
You said I'll second.
Sorry.
I'll also, I'll also vote the affirmative and make that unanimous. Thanks, Rick. Next is an application for a one-day license for the Italian-American Vets Post Number Forty. Um, Joe D. Antonio is the contact person. This is for the annual planes reunion, and they're looking for, uh, as I said, a one-day license, all alcoholic beverages, and that is for October first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve.
I would second that.
And I'll also vote affirmative and make that unanimous. All right, next is correspondence. Is there any correspondence we need to chat about?
I'll, I, I have a piece that, I just don't know if you had something, uh, well.
No, I mean, what, what we had was from Representative Murray, and, um.
Okay.
Rick spoke on that, so.
Okay, um, so, you know, we're working, uh, through, uh, the details of, uh, business plans, and, uh, should the town meeting approve, uh, purchase of the water company. Um, you know, I think there's some minor tweaks that need to be made, and I think they're minor improvements. Um, I'll work with Jerry on some of them, but I'll give you some, uh, some, um, inclination as to the direction. Um, when we talk about interim GM, will be provided department-owned vehicle for use while on-site. I just wanna make that's, make sure it's consistent with the sewer department, uh, because that's our ben- best benchmark to an internal department. Um, I don't know what's intended by the on-site versus on-site, so I need clarification on that. Um, in the selection process, um, Jerry made in the draft that he was revising and updating, um, references the selection process, and the department will entertain proposals. Um, I, and I think where it is, where department has repeatedly stated, uh, I don't know why we couldn't go to commissioners, but I'll, I'll, I'll be following up with Jerry on that, but I think he's looking for feedback from everyone, and, you know, that's the extent of my feedback. Nothing, nothing big. Um, and I don't know that I'm stuck on, um, qualification for civil engineering. Um, I think it could be an engineering degree, and there are a variety of industrial, uh, electric mechanical that, uh, have the, demonstrate aptitude, ability to read prints, understand hydraulics, and you go through a series of things where an engineer is capable of doing that and has the other requisite, uh, requirements. So, um, yeah, I, I don't know that we need to be so specific towards civil. Um, that would be my guidance, uh, recommendation, not knowing how the rest of the board feels, and I'm not making a motion. I just wanted to give you some sense of the direction I'm leaning on this.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Rick, did, did you get that?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, well, yeah, no, I think I have the gist of, yeah.
All right. Mike, any correspondence?
I just think that it's imperative that they mirror the, uh, they mirror the sewer department. The sewer department's a very well-run department in the town, and I think that, uh, once it's, well, it's gonna go to town meeting, it's gonna get purchased first, but I think that that's, that's something that we should look to. If, in fact, it happens, that's what we need to mirror.
Okay.
Yeah, I also want, uh, just another thing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think it's important that, uh, the public and others see that we're working on all the details, uh, of the business plan, whether it be, uh, the financing, whether it be, uh, the governance, whether it be the, uh, town manager. We have all the information we need to execute, uh, business plan, and if the feedback from the last forum we got, uh, was an indicator, what it meant is that we have to articulate it better, but I think, uh, we have all the components necessary for a business plan.
Great. Great. I, I had one, um, one additional piece of correspondence that, uh, I, I wanted to read, and Mike, you're probably very well aware of this, um, but it was a letter from the Superintendent Kevin McIntyre. Uh, "Dear Chairman Kincaid, this past June, Milford High School signed an agreement with Middle, Milford Federal Savings and Loan to move forward with the installation of a bank branch on the Milford High School campus. In recognition of this exciting partnership and in conjunction with Milford Federal, the Milford School Committee and Milford High School Principal, Mr. Joshua Ottlin, I cordially invite you to the Milford Federal Savings and Loan Bank Branch ribbon-cutting ceremony on Wednesday, October fourth at six-thirty p.m. in the Milford High School auditorium lobby." Um, and I was asked to RSVP to Melissa Bullock, which I did, and I'm excited to go. Um, obviously, when we had our, uh, second public forum, uh, last week with the water company, I got to see the, the branch.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's very impressive, and this is something that was talked about even fifteen years ago when I first got on the school committee. Um, so it's, it's, it's good to see it there, and actually, the structure there, and that's a partnership that I think is, uh, well overdue and very impressive. So, um, and by the way, my personal plug for Melissa, you guys gotta do whatever you have to, take care of her. She is so professional. She's unbelievable. She's a great worker anyway, so I'm gonna give her a plug.
She is.
Um, you guys are very lucky to have her. So, uh, I just wanted to let folks know, 'cause I think that's a little hidden gem there, that unless your kids, unless your child is a student there, you may not even know it's there, but, uh, it's, uh, pretty impressive. So, kudos to you guys and, uh, and to the new principal, uh, Mr. Ottlin.
Well, it's just another example of the great things that go on in the Milford Public Schools.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I, I, you've heard me say this for years, in my time on the school committee. If you criticize the Milford Public Schools, you've never been in the Milford Public Schools. And here's another example of where we just keep moving forward. You know, putting a bank branch inside your high school is pretty amazing.
Oh, and you know what? You wanna catch them before they go off to college and.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Get the, the, for the first visa in their hand and everything else.
I was just gonna say that I can, my, my son's first year of college, walking in the mailboxes and all the visa envelopes sitting on the floor, and I'm like, these people.
Well, we would do anything for free t-shirts then. You didn't realize the cards came with them. But, but, uh, nice job, and I think that's a, like you said, that's a nice positive, uh, partnership there, so.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And congratulations to Superintendent McIntyre and new principal, as you said.
Thanks, Bill. All right, any other correspondence? I think we covered that. We do have an executive session this evening, meeting with Town Council regarding the Milford Water Company, and also a claim for the town, and we'll also be meeting with the police chief regarding his contract. Thank you, and good night.
And you don't intend to?
And we do not intend to come back from executive session, but we do need a roll call.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes that you outlined.
I would second that.
I'll make that, I'll vote in affirmative and make that unanimous. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote in favor. Thank you very much. Have a good night.